Work session for Tuesday, October 21. And the first item on the agenda for this evening is the annual presentation from the tree board. We have our arborist, Mr. Semperich.
Yes, good evening. As always, thank you for the opportunity to present and provide an update. I'm here with the Marion Tree Board and I have an extremely passionate group of advocates here in Marion that support all the work we do and help guide a lot of the initiatives and the planning and execution that we take part in during our work schedule throughout the year. So I'd like to introduce them and I've got a few people that are going to help us read through some slides. And so we'll move on. Is that my slide? Never mind, I've got this one still. I just wanted to briefly talk about the board. We have our board meetings are held at Thomas Park the second Thursday of the month. I think that's a typo on the website. And they participate in a variety of different roles to help us with our process. But tree planting selection and prioritization is huge with the increased planting we've been doing. The board members help identify and prioritize areas throughout our urban reforestation plan and identify areas where we want to focus our efforts for replanting. They provide advice to me as the city arborist on different measures. They review public tree removal requests and appeal requests. We have a variety of different things that come in from residents through the course of the year. Sometimes it's the request to remove a tree, whether it's healthy or not. Usually it's the healthier tree removals that we review with Tree Board. And then if we plant a tree somewhere and a resident disputes that placement or that location that we selected, we go through an appeal process with the board as well. They also review budget proposal considerations. And more importantly, the urban forest utility fee and how that's managed. And then they also make recommendations to you, City Council, when we have things that we're interested in seeing change. Reforestation, the urban reforestation plan is underway. We're implementing that in the current FY and looking towards FY 26. Currently, the average trees that we're planting on an annual basis is just over or it's averaging just over 1,700. That's a total average from the last five years. And in total, over those last five years, we planted over 8,418 trees. That's kind of an increased effort, but also kind of where I think we were pacing despite the derecho and some of the losses that we've sustained. And those numbers based off of the plan and the implementation we're moving forward with will continue to increase over the next five to six years. We are seeing an incredible survival rate with a lot of those new plantings. We've changed our tactics a little from time to time and learned some things from experience in the field. But we're seeing upwards of 80% survival rate. And I would argue closer to 90% survival rate on a lot of those right-of-way plantings. I do want to clarify, the inventory numbers that you'll see on a future slide doesn't represent that total 8,000 because a lot of those trees, approximately 50%, are being implemented into green space areas and natural areas. We're not only reforesting woodland in the public spaces and parks and right-aways, but we're also planting in natural areas and other places where we lost a lot of that green canopy. And so you'll see an increase in the overall tree population in the next slide, but only about 50% of that is inventoried or represented through inventory. Some of the next steps coming up, we're going to continue with implementation and analysis. What we're looking to do is create a repetitive routine that we can kind of replay and plug and play every year and do the analysis and reflect on how the last year went from a bunch of different considerations related to budget and efficiency and just making sure that we're not getting ahead of ourselves and our resources to make these goals successful. We'll schedule future phases of the planting detail out. The reforestation plan has done a large percent of this for us, but it's not necessarily recommended on a specific schedule. So we have some flexibility and we can scale how we implement that over future years. We're going to improve some standard practices. Some of the things we've noticed that maybe we're not doing that would help increase canopy in the community is not having a requirement for new development to put right-of-way trees in place. And so we're currently reviewing that and working towards better practices on an internal basis to help implement more trees into the community as it grows. And then staff will provide, or I will be here to provide more of an in-detailed update on that urban reforestation implementation next month. The public tree inventory, as I mentioned, our pre-dericho tree population was 6,387. That dropped to 3,000, just over 3,000 following the derecho because we had approximately 45 or 50% tree loss throughout the community. The current public tree population as of today is above that number initially at 7,500, over 7,500. That accounts for about 50% of those 8,000 plantings I was talking about. And the big consideration to keep in mind when we look at that is we may have jumped back to a number higher than what we had before, but the benefit and value of those young trees doesn't quite match the benefit and value of the mature trees that were in that canopy. And so we've still got some time to go and some development that needs to take place before we really reach those goals. And in addition to that, we're looking at approximately 20,000 more plantings into the city public spaces and right-aways over the next 10 years with an overall canopy coverage goal of 35%. That really helps identify, you know, what we're aiming for in that percentage rate. 35% is what we get as a recommendation from the DNR and state directives. But we can plant a lot of trees, but it's important to recognize that planting the trees is simply the first step. We need to maintain them and grow those into healthy canopy before we really realize that coverage percentage. This is just kind of a before-after focal point. And what we're really aiming towards with right-of-way reforestation. The picture on the left you can see is a newer development that is absent of any right-of-way plantings along the street side. And then the picture on the right is a similar neighborhood as far as development timeline, but it's an area that we've gone in and implemented right-of-way plantings in place. Those trees are young, so we still don't have that over-canopy effect that kind of gives coverage to the street. But we have the right steps completed and installed to work towards that goal long-term.
Oh, my turn, okay. Hello, I'm John Hanson. I'm on the board. And I'd just like to say how grateful I am for our forester and the Parks Department for their support of urban forestry and the council in general. We have a lot of accomplishments. I think the derecho really honed my focus. And I feel like the people on the board have just read how important and what a difference, positive difference, trees make. One of those differences is that we get to claim of being an Arbor City. That kind of goes along with the like a bird-friendly city, yeah. And despite the derecho, we've maintained that status. And we're looking forward to, as annexation and new developments take on, that we're going to make sure they're forested for maintain our tree status, but that people like trees. The last thing about the grants, is this a CBDG slide? I didn't think so. Okay, I didn't think so. Being a tree city puts us in position to, one, get their feedback and, two, get their grants. And so that's pretty important. Okay, thank you.
So speaking of grants, Marion has been the recipient of several grants and many of them have been repeated over many years. So this is the 25, 26 review of the grants that have been awarded up to this point. John's going to speak a little bit more specifically about the CDBG or the Community Development Block Grant that we were awarded for not quite a million dollars. But the other ones still play a really important part. And in many cases, we're doing things in partnership with other organizations to really stretch those grant dollars. The Monarch Research Project, which many of you participate in there, trees and their butterflies and their prairies, they've been really instrumental in growing, I think, public awareness. And that means to continue to reach some of the 10-year forestry goals that we have. Trees Forever, of course, is a really big partner. And some of the programs that they host is helping kids, young people, students, some of whom are, let's say, in a lower socioeconomic or struggling citizenship-type situation. And they've been able to find employment through a Trees Forever grant and in partnership with the city to water a lot of the right-of-way trees that may or may not have gotten quite the love and attention, given all of the stuff that Mike and his crew have to take care of. And then, of course, we've got the Iowa National Heritage Foundation that plays a big role. And we, yeah, don't know as much about them. I know they're big.
You got the CDBG just right.
Yeah, right. So then John's going to speak more specifically about the CDVG.
All right. Hello, John Hanson, I'm back again. The C, the Community Development Block Grant, is the grant that has moved the needle. Its valuation is larger by magnitudes than all the other grants put together. And it allowed us and will allow us to really address the neighborhoods that are going to most benefit from trees. Trees is energy-saving infrastructure for air conditioning bills or even wind-blown, I guess, heating bills. And to help, I think, be that rising tide that lifts all ships. Because a neighborhood that is treed, that are taken care of, it looks nicer. And there's something intrinsically desirable out of it. So we're very thankful for that grant and we're going to make good use of it. Thank you.
This is just a map of that low-to-moderate-income area that we'll be focusing on. The timeline for that is to open for bidding over winter this period and then implement planting in spring of 2026. And the deadline for that program and funding expenditure is September of 2026.
Hello, I'm Tom Ryan. Thanks for having us here today. When we were sitting around talking about the slides at the board meeting, I thought, you know what, we probably should have some pictures because, you know, we're a visual society and talk about trees gets kind of boring after a while. And I thought, you know what, there's some cool species too that a lot of the people on the board may not even be aware of. So like, the one there on the left is a Kentucky coffee tree. I mean, a coffee tree, and usually coffee you think of, you know, like Columbia or South America. I'm not sure if it produces coffee per se, but it's a neat sounding tree and it's actually a really cool tree too. And that one there, I actually planted across the street from my neighbor, an elderly neighbor, three years ago, and I had to nurse that little guy to stand all on its own. So there he is. That was a Monarch Research tree. And you guys can read the notes, it's tolerant, blah, blah, blah. But I had to baby that thing. And then the middle one is a Catalpa. Those are the ones with the giant leaves. You see those when you drive around. A lot of people don't even know what they are. It's a Catalpa. So I thought I'd throw that in there. They're really pretty too. And then on the right, a lot of folks don't even know that aspens can grow in Iowa. Usually when you think of an aspen, you think of the Northern Climes or maybe the Rocky Mountains. But this one is a hybrid that is hardy and can live right here in Iowa. So yeah, there's the aspen. Is there another one?
Yep.
Okay. And then on the left there, there's a hybrid elm. Most you folks look like you're older than 70 or younger than 70. Sorry about that.
I thought it was maybe the
But back in the 60s and 70s, we had the Dutch elm disease and that wiped out all the elms in the area. Not unlike the ash borer that took so many out in recent memory. But this was a disease. So, you know, believe it or not, we actually do have elms in town now. They're just much more disease-resistant. And that one is important to me because I live in that. I used to live in that little apartment right there when Scott Hanson, I don't know if you guys remember him. He was Tree Board member for a lot of years. And he came knocking on my door asking me if I would like to have a tree on my... I wasn't the owner of the apartment, but he still asked me. And they planted that tree and it is just a beautiful tree. It's roughly 10 years old and there it is. And then, kind of like the aspen, you probably didn't know we have redwoods growing in Marion. That's something you normally hear about in California or whatever on the West Coast. But this one here is like a hybrid and we have redwoods. So keep your eyes open and there it is, another beautiful tree right here in Marion. So, yep.
Oh, we threw some more pictures in here. That's awesome. We'd be happy to entertain any questions if the council has them.
Well, first of all, thank you for coming in to present. It's important for us to hear from you. Second of all, thank you for your, all your efforts. It's wonderful to see such an engaged, informed board. That's exactly the kind of board members we want on all our city boards and commissions. What you do really impacts our city. You're certainly part of the success of our city and the quality of life that we provide. So thank you for volunteering and for your service. And of course, thank you to Mike and his staff for everything they do. I have just a couple of questions, I think. So the Emerald Ash Borer, is that a thing of the past, no longer an issue or?
Not 100%. We don't have many concerns with declining ash trees in the public areas. One area that it would certainly still be a concern is on private property. We see a lot of declining trees on private property existing still. And it's a challenge just because there's a cost related to removal and maintenance or elimination of those hazards. And often, most average homeowners aren't really inclined to spend that money just to see something disappear and get nothing back from it except for peace of mind. And so it's kind of something that a lot of people are neglecting, you know, to take care of in a proactive manner. So.
I was just curious because we haven't heard that term used even in so long.
Yeah, it's still there, it still exists. But we've mitigated as many of the hazards as we could on private, or I'm sorry, on public property. And, you know, we're involved with some concerns that come in on private property still occasionally.
And how much of the work that you do is done by additional volunteers besides the board?
We try to incorporate volunteers in just about every planting project we do. It can get challenging just with scheduling and time availabilities because sometimes certain groups are locked into specific slots. But we do a pretty good job entertaining those. As far as percentage rate of how much volunteer incorporation we do, I would say it's probably about 50/50. And it varies. Sometimes we have volunteers on every project and sometimes we have no volunteers on any projects, certain places, so.
And how's our utility doing? Is it serving us well or?
It is. It makes everything we do possible. I'd speak with a lot of other communities that don't have that type of arrangement from a budgetary standpoint. And we are certainly not facing a lot of the same challenges they are with budget cutbacks and restrictions and things like that. We have a little more freedom to manage the things that we want to and the way that we'd like to financially.
For those who don't know, we were the first in the state to have the utility.
And I have the DNR and other community leaders reach out to me frequently to just incline about, you know, how we like that, how it works for us. And there's, I don't know what the total is anymore, but there's a handful of other communities in the state now that have done or followed the similar path.
I know you told us about the rate of plantings or the number of plantings we've done in the last five years. How does that compare to private property? Or do you have any sense of that? I know it's not your, you know, out of your control, but do you have any sense of how the, at least, you know, the rate of plantings we're doing, how that compares to private property?
We've had one program that gives us a little bit of a feel for how that's going. And the Right-of-Way Enrichment Program with Monarch Research with donated trees, about 30% of the trees that are registered for by residents out of the total number are being implemented into the private property. We go out and do site surveys and then provide advice to those people when they pick up the trees and let them know if they have suitable space or where they, more specifically. And almost everybody that's registered for three but has space for one is putting the other two on private property and/or sharing with neighbors and friends. So overall consideration, we don't have a real great number on that, but we do know that we're encouraging it and we're providing some of the supplies and tools for people to do so.
I don't want to take up all the question time myself, so go ahead.
Yeah, I
Agent and Steve.
I echo every thing the mayor said in terms of the appreciation to you, Mike, and to you as board members. Not to be dramatic, but I do truly believe that the 2020s is probably the most important decade in the city of Marion to be on the Tree Board and to be in this line of work that we experienced at the beginning of it. My question is, you know, it's great to see those numbers and I know the canopy impacts progress as those trees mature over the years. Do we have, like, data gathering either ourselves or with partners that over the years measure kind of those public health or environmental or energy impacts? And then will that get kind of like reported publicly to be like, as this canopy grows and matures, it's impacting our community in these ways and these different sectors?
We don't currently have any data like that, but it is something that's been discussed in, you know, long-term conversations. There would certainly be data that could be put together and compared in that way to look at those percentage rates in the area in coordination with, you know, canopy coverage overall through the community.
Yeah, I think it would be really interesting and also super important because, I don't know, we're in a unique situation in this area. It's like a potential case study for nationwide for other communities that may go through this someday. And so it kind of shows the importance.
Statistically, it's growing in conversation that there are numbers that support, you know, mental health awareness and percentiles in correlation to urban canopy and things.
Absolutely, another great data point. So, thank you. I was just interested.
Steve?
Mike, you and I talked a year ago about all the ash trees. My comment is really on all the ash trees that are on the private property. And so a year ago, we talked about how the ash trees were starting to look bad. And roll forward to this summer, and now they look really bad. And I think, if I recall, your comment from a year ago was that the longer those big ash trees sit around, the limbs become drier, more brittle, and strong winds could tend to basically bring some of those large branches down on top of a rooftop. Is that still correct?
Yeah, that is still a correct statement. The way the borer takes over the tree and causes damage to the tissues, it dries out more quickly and becomes brittle faster than another species or another mortality in another species. And so there's definitely a hazard and a higher level of risk present there that changes with ever-going time.
So the risk I see in our community, when I drive around, I see some really, really large ash trees. When I go to visit my sister-in-law on West 9th, I go down that street and there are a huge row of big, dead ash trees. The good thing is, they're all in the front yard, but I see neighborhoods where they're in the backyard. And so I wonder if we should be consider putting an article about the risk of those trees in our Marion Messenger, either in the winter or in the spring. Because even if one of those big limbs falls on the rooftop, they're still going to have the cost of removing the tree themselves. The insurance is not going to pay anything. And then they're having the bad situation of fixing the house and going through maybe some displacement. So I see enough around the city. I have a concern every time I see that many trees that maybe we need to at least forewarn them about what that potential risk may be in the foreseeing years.
Yeah, we could certainly do something like that. We've had some requests similar to that come in over the last year and we're starting to see an uptick in those concerns. Public calling in but referred to private trees that are hazards.
Okay, yeah, great job by the entire Tree Board.
Thank you.
Let me have the, go ahead, Grant.
Yeah. If we could back up to that slide that shows tree coverage in Marion was one of the earlier slides, yeah, this one.
Yep.
Is this a to-be-planted map? Or is this our current canopy as it basically stands now?
Good question. That is our current canopy as it stands now. The green dots represent trees that are in place or existing. There's some brown dots in there that indicate stumps that we need to follow up on for maintenance. We change the status of them when they're removed or storm damage, whatever. And then there's some other color there in the bottom-left corner that's, it's kind of transparent. And that indicates locations where we've completed tree removals and it was a previous tree site. So we can track some of that and we do circle back and look at those for replacement.
Okay, all right. I was curious what that was depicting. Then the last item is really just a comment. And Ryan, this is, I think, useful for you to have awareness of. But Mike and Kim were extremely responsive to a concern I had. I'll be kind of generic in my comments here, but it was regarding some resonant concern about the current planting effort underway. And just on the basis of that concern, they recalibrated their total work effort and proceeded almost without a break, it seems, with getting trees planted in areas that we have a concern about. And I would just want to say, I think it was Monday on Tower Terrace Road, just by Lennon Lane, trees were being set out. And there were enough trees there that if I had to dig those holes and plant them, it would have been a one-decade-long experience. And the next day, they were in the ground. So congratulations on that.
Thank you. We had about a 225-tree swing with that minor change and we were able to accommodate that. And then the tree planting, we had 15 volunteers from Lynn County REC out with us planting yesterday. And 60 trees went in very quickly with that group.
Yeah, it's cool.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions?
I think Joe showed up just a minute late. He wanted
Yes, welcome, Joe.
Good to see all you guys. We've had our ash tree inoculated. I think this is the fourth or fifth inoculation and they said it's doing great. So if you get at it early in the future, you know, impress to the people, if they get at it early, you can save your tree. Because he just did it this summer and he said it looks great. And it's about, I don't know, 25 to 30 feet tall, so really good. Anyway, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, anything else?
That's it.
Thank you very much. Really appreciate it.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Next item is a budget discussion on asset replacement program.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. This is a continuation of our fiscal year '27 budget discussions. This is on the asset replacement program. And we are here in October. And then next month, as you can see, we will see you for the capital improvement plan discussion. So just, I'll kind of breeze through these kind of first few slides. Just a quick overview of what the asset replacement program is. This is Fund 105, which is, or the first fund is Fund 105, which is our equipment replacement fund. That's the replacement fund for our general fund. And then we also have our road use replacement funds and our utility replacement funds, which are separate asset replacement funds. Note that not everything may be under 105 fund for the equipment reserve. Some things we do recommend for a different funding source, those larger capital items like fire apparatus as such. So the goals, so this is our third year that we've, since we revamped the asset replacement schedules. I'm not going to read all the goals here, but one thing we did do, which was Steve had brought up last year, was that we looked at those F thresholds for the asset replacement program and what Fund 105 was funding. And so we looked at that. And so now, since we had an all-encompassing asset replacement schedule, we thought that this was a time to increase that threshold from $500 to $2,000. So that means that anything under $2,000 would be a part of the department's operating line items that they would track. So what we kind of focus on is that annual reserve amount. So this is the. When you're looking to replace a piece of equipment, so you're looking at the projection of what that replacement cost is, you're going to look at. How long that piece of equipment is meant to last. And then that replacement cost divided by the useful life gives you that kind of annual set aside amount, right? So. Add that with all the pieces of equipment that we have across the general fund, then you get to that kind of target annual reserve amount. So this year it's at set two point two nine million. Once we did the analysis and you can see the police and fire. Which makes sense. Public safety holds the large portion of that equipment. So then that annual reserve amount here on this slide, so you'll see that in the top and then those estimated expenditures. Very from year to year, right? Depending on what's due to be replaced on the schedule. Could be from about one point five million one year to maybe over two point five the next, but that annual reserve amount target is at two point three. So what I want to focus on this is a little bit different from last year. So this is kind of showing some comparisons that like the work that we've been doing. So just to kind of explain this slide, so. The lines are the projected fund balances over time for the Equipment Reserve Fund. And so the green line at the bottom that you'll see is last year's projections. Okay, so you may recall that we were kind of underfunding. Our Fund One O Five at about a million dollars consistently. That's what we were funding. And so those projections. As of last year, we were looking to go negative in in fiscal year twenty eight. So now kind of jumping forward to this year's projections, so those top three lines. The blue, so the dark blue line is that annual reserve. Target which you'll see over the next slides as well with the utility funds is that a dark blue is at two point two three million for the general fund. So if we fund consistently across that. Amount, that's the blue line. The light blue line is funding where we're funding fiscal year twenty six. That transfer is two million. So if we take that consistently across and then we all know that there's budget years have challenges, right? So in case we couldn't maybe funded that two million level, the orange line. Is funding it consistently at one point five. And so the other thing I want to note here is that difference in fiscal year twenty five in the jump in fund balance is that strategic move that was made by council. At the last work session when we from the general fund reserves, we funded the equipment replacement fund by two million dollars. So that's a one time transfer, but with the hopefully with the outlooks with some increased. Transfers more consistent in the one point five million to two million dollar range. We see hopefully we're in a much healthier position than we just were a couple of years ago. So that's a credit to all the work that the staff have done. And council's direction. So this is probably the most. Complicated slide that you might have have some questions on. So I'll pause here for any questions specifically on the general fund. Before we kind of look at the. Road use and the other utility funds.
Any questions? Not yet.
Always time at the end too for questions, so you don't have.
Great, just formulating a question, I can tell.
I'm kind of slow sometimes, but Brian, so the upshot of this as I'm taking it is. What this shows is that the underfunding condition has disappeared or is disappearing?
It's improved.
Okay.
Yeah, so.
Okay.
It's it's year to year. There's always challenges as we know. But that influx was certainly helpful. As you can see, it's kind of bolstered that fund balance. And with the projections over time with the challenges that we know come with every budget year. We obviously hope to fund at those higher levels, but it's kind of given us that cushion.
So by it's improved a bit, what we're really saying is is that the serviceable life of all of our equipment. Were still not. Necessarily keeping up with the cycle time on replacing that equipment in total.
Yes, yeah, so we're so there's still work to do on that. We still have work to do with like, I mean, there's. So one of the long term goals that you'll see at the end of the slide is potentially, you know, like an asset. Management system like tracking, re kind of condition of our assets. There's a lot of work to be done, but. This is obviously that backbone is the financial part that we hope that we can keep keep adequately funded and then work on all those other things as we go.
So if we just separate out the large dollar equipment. You know, trucks and fire apparatus and squad cars and all of that kind of stuff. And maybe others might need to chime in on this, but what's our next big biggest equipment? Expenditure that we have to make and it my my assumption would be it would be in I T. But I'm curious, what's what's kind of the next tier of big expenditures that we have to have to make?
So so just to clear up, so the. So this really, it 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 does include all of our squad cars, everything. Really, the only thing is those like. Over a million dollar like fire trucks, really. That's where they become part of the C I P. They're potentially funded by bonding or loss. We have all of our equipment placed in this model, all of our other equipment. So as far as. As far as the funding sources, so we analyze, so if there's a big kind of capital request that could be an I T request, for example. We analyze that and go. Okay, is it part of our asset replacement or is it part of a larger one time capital cost replacement? Which is placed into the C I P, which is evaluated for the funding sources under that. The Equipment Reserve is all of our day to day operational equipment, but those fire trucks are obviously very, very expensive that it's. It's hard to maintain the general fund to sustain. Those one to two million to two point five million dollar purchases. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, in fact, it gave me the context to think differently about this. So thank you. Tuition check in the mail. Okay.
So then moving on to our road use and our utility funds. And so road use replacement is funded by an annual transfer from the road use fund. So here's that annual reserve amount there, the eight hundred and thirty four thousand. And then our estimated expenditures. So you'll see in fiscal year twenty thirty, there's a bit of a jump that's. We're trying to stagger those replacements of the power trucks and that's the first year that the first one or two hit the replacement schedule. So planning ahead. So then road use here, again, same lines. So the dark blue is that annual reserve target. We're on our annual transfers have been about at seven hundred thousand for the road use. So we're slightly below that annual reserve amount. And are slightly higher fund balance than the than like last year's projected green line is just due to. Replacements coming in slightly lower than we had projected. So that's a good thing. Outlook for the fund is good, but obviously continuing to monitor. And see if we need to increase that transfer amount come come budget time. Probably the most, one of the most complicated ones, San Diego Sewer Replacement Fund. The annual reserve amount is two hundred thousand or just over. That's just equipment. Sewer, we do have some C I P obligations for sewer. So sewer replacement is funded. By that separate replacement capital charge on our residents water bill at three dollars and fifteen cents. So the annual reserve only includes equipment, but the expenditures include our other annual C I P. San Diego Sewer Slip Landing Program. So that comes in at about five hundred thousand and then you add that on to the equipment. And then add on any other one off C I P sewer projects that we are plugging in to fund with. Sewer replacement. So a lot of moving parts. In the sewer fund, there's also the obligations down the line with the wastewater treatment plant proceeded rapid. So. Moving parts, we will obviously keep a close eye on this fund as we move into the fiscal year twenty seven budget. And yeah, so you can see the projections there. It was, we had strategically increased. The fund balance there just for those known future replacements, but you can see it kind of fables out from twenty eight to thirty. And then solid waste, the annual reserve amount at the four sixty nine. This is funded by an annual transfer also from solid waste operating fund. And so. There was a strategic spend down on the solid waste replacement fund. The goal is to build that balance back up. Over future for future replacements. And the difference that you see between the green line, which was last year's projections is that. We now have no intention, I believe Mike can correct me if I'm wrong. But we don't have an intention to replace a very expensive horizontal grinder piece of equipment. So. That's so we've seen it's more cost efficient to contract out that service. So that's where you see that kind of jump from last year. So again, similar to the other funds, we'll continue to look at this when we come into the fiscal year twenty seven budget process. Cause we have been transferring slightly more than what the annual reserve amount is showing us, so. Then on that, I'm not going to read all the kind of. Future goals of the fund, but the main thing is that we will continue to work between now and when the budget submissions are due with departments. To make sure that we're prioritizing and we're refining estimates. Before the submission on the work session for the fiscal year twenty seven budget. So I'll just kind of land on this slide, just to remind you where we're at and open up to any other questions.
Go ahead. Just a quick comment, Brian. I'm assuming you're going to show us that slide related to the general fund when we work on our budget in early twenty six.
Which which slide are you referring to?
The slide show on the. Trends for the general fund.
You mean the five year forecast?
Equipment.
So the five year forecast for the general fund? Yes.
Yeah, I'm assuming we'll see that again at budget time to kind of talk about how to move that forward and.
Correct. Yep, that was a decision point out of last year's work session and we'll be looking at that because it's all intermingled.
Okay, thank you.
Page. Never mind. Okay.
We will see you in November for capital improvement.
Thank you, Brian. Next is Leanne with a discussion on debt service payment.
Good evening. Tonight, we're seeking direction regarding the abatement of principal and interest on the General Obligation Bond twenty twenty five B. Which is associated with the Broad and Main Economic Development Grant. And this is a head of the Tax Increment Finance indebtedness certification that will come forward to City Council in November. So for fiscal year twenty six, twenty seven, related to Broad and Main, it's an interest only payment of two hundred and forty four thousand. Nine hundred and sixty seven dollars. And the staff's recommendation is to abate the full amount with tax increment finance. And this kind of shows you the why. So if you look actually. At just the central corridor, you would see that it's about a nineteen point six percent increase overall in our ask for central corridor. Which would mean we'd be recapturing revenue from previous years that we had released in that particular urban renewal area. However, when you look in totality across all of our urban renewal areas, our overall ask is increasing by just a point one percent. And bearing in mind that we have new valuation that comes on each year with some of these new projects. The only other thing that I want to add to for City Council. Is the school district impact, because definitely when you look at across each urban renewal area, the makeup of the school districts. How much is Marion Independent versus how much is Lynn Mar? Is it is a true impact to them that isn't to us because we're. Taxed the same across all. So I did use historical data and looked at and applied the numbers and the overall TIF certification request. Would result in a recapture of TIF revenue from the Marion Independent School District and a decrease in the Lynn Mar School District. Of approximately ten to fifteen thousand dollars, which on a reassessment year. We felt probably would not be as noticeable as it would on a. Non reassessment year and I we do have, as you recall, during the urban renewal. Plan amendments, we do have conversations with the school districts. So they're aware of all of these obligations. So seeking direction from City Council and if there's any questions.
Questions? Any concerns? You know, with any serious objections to the, okay.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, Leanne. Next item is. An update on the Automatic Traffic Enforcement Camera Program.
Mr. Mayor, Council, good afternoon. My name is Corey Burning. I'm one of the lieutenants with the Marion Police Department. I've been asked to give you a quick update on the annual A T E program. So this is the first year we've operated under a permit system. In the past, we've been able to place the car. Wherever we wanted. Basically, we we tried to respond to citizens' requests. So if a citizen said, hey, I've got a problem here, we put the car here. We've been restricted to twenty nine locations via the permit. The permit only applies to speed enforcement. It does not apply to the red lights. So. Last year, we we applied for probably fifty eight locations. We were approved twenty nine. Of the twenty nine that were denied, we appealed four of them. The first one was a twelve hundred block of Sixth Avenue. That was denied. We actually took that one to a formal hearing. And that was also denied. The second location was a thirty five hundred block of one hundred. That was denied. And then the speed enforcement on the two intersections, one hundred and East Post Road. And thirteen and one fifty one were also denied. So as far as the locations go, for speed enforcement, like I said, we're limited limited to the mobile unit only. We have twenty nine approved locations and there were some changes last year. That only allow us to capture vehicles that are receding or driving past the mobile unit. We cannot do anything. Approaching, it would get the front plate. The red light cameras, all the speed enforcement was turned off on those. Which left us with two locations at one hundred and East Post Road. One facing eastbound and one facing westbound. There was another one facing southbound, but with the reconstruction last fall that was removed. And also the right turn lanes, those became dedicated yield lanes, so enforcement on those was was removed. Thirteen and one fifty one, we retained all three directions. We never did have, we never had any. Going eastbound. Yes, east. Yes, eastbound. So citations from last year to this year. Last year, there were eleven thousand nine hundred and seventy two citations. This year, there were ten thousand four hundred and sixty three. The speed citations. Were reduced significantly due to the factors that I previously explained. The mobile unit. Part of the process for getting permits. We had some signage issues, so it was offline from October, November and December. We were able to put it out forty three different deployments following that. And there's the distribution of citations per month. Highway one hundred and East Post Road, it was offline due to some construction, October, November. We had a total of a hundred and fifty three red light citations last year and there's the monthly distribution on those. So. This is probably the with the impact slide of the entire thing. So for the five years. Back up for at highway one hundred and East Post Road. For the five years prior to having any sort of any sort of automatic enforcement at that location. We averaged one point four accidents per month with thirty nine injuries and one fatality. The previous year from from now, we had averaged one accident per month with a total of nine injuries. And this current year, we average point nine two accidents per month with eight injuries. So that location is is still kind of early to tell what the long term results will be. But it does appear to be trending in in the correct direction. So highway thirteen and one fifty one, there were ten thousand three hundred and ten red light citations at that location. And here is the monthly distribution. So as far as the accident data on that location, so the previous five years. We averaged one point five accidents per month, a total of forty nine injuries. The previous year, we averaged one point one six. Accidents per month with two injuries. And this current year, we averaged point seven five. accidents per month with two injuries. And this current year, we averaged point seven five accidents per month with two injuries. Once again, this appears to be trending in the right direction. So the financials from the program. So overall, there were one million three hundred thousand dollars in total fines paid. The city share of that was sixty two point two three percent with eight hundred nine thousand three hundred forty seven dollars. So as far as contested citations go, when someone receives a citation, they have thirty days to submit a contest, at which time they'll give like a written explanation of of why they're contesting it. And then one of the command staff officers will take a look at the citation and take into consideration what their what their issues are and kind of take a second look at it. Of those, about five percent of the total citations issued are contested, and of those contested, twelve percent are ruled not liable or canceled. So the next steps um in January, we'll start working on the annual permit, uh annual report to the DOT. And then as the year goes on, we'll monitor the ATE legislation and see if there's any more requirements or changes that we need to adapt to.
What question? Thank you. Questions? Steve?
I got, I got two questions. Uh first of all, can you remind us what the rationale was by our legislators on significantly reducing the areas for speed enforcement?
That I don't have a lot of firsthand knowledge on, but from the hearing that we went through.
Yeah.
It was kind of it's kind of all over the place. Um I don't think I have any understanding as to why they they chose to restrict what we do on our own city streets.
So I'm assuming they're consistent across the state for all the other cities. So from that standpoint, I'm not sure I still agree with it, but at least they're being consistent in how they're uh looking at it in all the cities. The other question I had, I've had a couple of individuals ask me. So if you're going through, all we have now is red lights, especially I hear more people talking about highway thirteen and one fifty one. So if I'm going through at an intersection, I'm heading, say I'm heading west on highway on one fifty one, turning south on thirteen. So if my, if say if half my car is past the stopping point, I'm just past that stopping point, and then it turns red, are they going to get a citation?
No. So the way that works is there's a half second grace period.
Okay.
So if if they're within a half a second, they're at the line, they can they can cross the line by half a second, not get a citation.
Okay.
When we review those, it gets a little tricky because the faster they're going, the harder it is to stop and see. But if if their vehicle is not on the the back side of the white line as that light is red, they will not get a citation.
Okay, so if the entire car is past that white line, they're fine.
If their bumper touches the white line, they will, if their front bumper touches the white line, they will not get a citation.
If the front bumper touches the white line, they will not. Okay.
If the front bumper touches the white line within half a second after it turning red, they will not get a citation.
All right. I thank you.
It appears you're safe, Steve.
Great.
Um, can we back up one slide, please? So that seventy four rule not liable, that is twelve percent of the six hundred and nine, correct?
Yes.
You know what that number really tells me? If we if we calced that out with the twelve thousand and ninety one total citations, um what that signifies, at least to me, is there's a fairly high degree of accuracy in our detection and decision making on this.
There's there's a lot of leeway built into them that go in the driver's favor.
Well, I still just think this this is this is just showing um again that the system is working and working quite well when you take it on the total citation basis versus those ruled not liable.
I I agree.
Gage?
Yeah, thank you. Um, on your last slide, uh you just mentioned monitoring the twenty twenty six legislation session. Is that just general monitoring? Or have there been discussions about further legislation happening?
I on a, from a personal level, I would anticipate there will be more bills at least introduced. But we'll just see what happens.
Do you know what they'd be like regarding specifically within it?
I know last year there were bills um regarding eliminating outside um corporations outside of the state of Iowa participating in this, um straight up banning the devices in general.
Okay.
Your guess is probably better than.
Okay, no, fair enough. Thank you. I was just curious.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, we have Brett. Decretive wraps. Okay.
Decretive wraps. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Brett Naver, Deputy Director of Parks and Recreation. So tonight, we're bringing forward information and staff recommendations from an earlier council request. At the end of this presentation, we'll be seeking um seeking direction on next steps. So first of all, uh just wanted to explain a little bit about uh the original request was to wrap utility owned um u- utility boxes. So staff reached out to Alliant Energy and um discussed that that option with them. And long story short, you you uh Alliant Energy was not interested in wrapping their utility boxes for several reasons. Uh mainly is, you can see the warning sticker on the on the left, and they didn't want to cover that or obstruct that and or distract from that in any way. Uh, second is that they didn't want to introduce any type of heating. Uh wrapping it could introduce even more heating into the internal components. So after that discussion, staff focused more on city owned utility. And we have examples up here. On the silver one is a traffic uh traffic box. And then on the right is contains a water uh backflow device. So these are all options that we could seek. So looking at other communities, uh this is an example of what Cedar Rapids has done on First Avenue uh around the Cottage Grove Grove area. And with that project, um I Cedar Rapids shared what what they did with me. And approximately twenty seven hundred dollars is what it costs per panel. And you can see that breakdown right there. Two thousand was for the wrap and then seven that seven hundred was for um the artist fee fee per box. Um, meeting with cutting edge graphics here in town, um he was able to give me uh some information as far as what to expect for lifespan and then for for maintenance of of a wrap. So this kind of speaks to that. So orientation here for your perspective, north is to the right. What you're looking at is Tenth Street uh at the intersections of Sixth, Seventh, and Eighth Avenues. So staff um is recommending that these locations be looked at for perspective wrapping. Um, utility, uh they would be the traffic utility boxes that that you saw earlier, and they're located at at these areas. Um, we did meet with uh with the chamber, and they're in favor of these locations. And then we've also presented and met with the art council, and they would be in favor of leading this project uh through a steering committee uh and their own members and then um stakeholders within this community or specifically this area. So um in conclusion, uh staff recommends that the traffic panels at Sixth, Seventh, and Eighth along Tenth Street be considered. Uh proposed budget for the project would be approximately ten thousand dollars. Uh art and the art council and the chamber would would help lead this effort. Um, and then um grant opportunities would be sought by staff uh and then also with the art council. And this could uh propose would be put into the FY twenty seven budget and be discussed during the work. Uh, the, yeah, the budgets work session and be considered with other projects. And with that, I'll take any questions.
So could you go back to the burial?
Yes.
Yeah. So aren't there some to the east on the east of that block?
There are some east to the block along Seventh Avenue.
Yeah. So why aren't those under consideration?
Uh, actually, we talked to uh um Public Works, and that one's going to be removed in the future. Or there's one of those that are going to be removed in the future. So that was why that one wasn't considered. I think it was that, is it twelfth?
It's to me, those are the ones that are most noticeable, more than the others personally. I mean, because they're right there in in our beautiful new space. Um, I bet. So so one of them is going to get, how many are there?
So the signal of, I believe it's thirteenth, gets removed when we extend uh Seventh Avenue as part of the um.
Oh, on thirteenth?
Yep.
But what about?
The ones in the park are staying there.
And those are city owned?
Those are.
Some in the plaza?
Most of those are, yes.
I guess, I mean, I just had just a question. I'm not not questioning the judgment of the staff or anybody. I mean, I know you've put time into it, but I just a.
Mayor, I, yeah, I mean, if 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 that's something council wants us to direct, we can take that back to our council and and incorporate that into the plan uh and the draft budget.
Because I I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, Grant, like you, we've had, you've had people say something. We've people who have mentioned something about they've, those are the ones they mentioned, you know, residents who have said, oh, you have this new beautiful space, but what about those boxes? It's it's those that they're talking about. I haven't had comments on the others, not that we shouldn't do the others, but.
No, and this is the the kind of the direction that we're seeking. So this is this is good. I know one of the one of the um utility panels that specifically by the uh by the statue
Right.
in the park, that one um does pose some challenges just because there's so many eggs auxiliary um boxes off of that main panel. Uh so if that's, I think that's probably one of them that is a target location, and that one could be challenging, but we could work around it for sure.
Yeah, I mean, I guess because of the location, you know, we would just need to be very probably even more thoughtful than with the others in terms of what actually goes on it or how it looks, you know?
Yep.
So that blends in more than sticks out and. Oh, but uh go ahead, Grant.
Yeah. So in this depiction, the one that's on uh Eighth Avenue and Tenth Street, um that just it kind of seems like a low priority one. And the reason why I say that is is because the utility pole that is on that corner and is substantially scuffed up with people that are are turning tight and then hit that utility pole.
They do?
Yeah. Oh, yeah. It's it's lovely. Um, anyway, I just just there's a whole a a bunch of stuff about the aesthetics of that particular corner that kind of makes that one in my mind's eye um less of a priority versus things that are in this in the Central Plaza. Um, a- anyway, a question about our uh city owned utility boxes. Do we have at all the same concern that Alliant does about heat generation of the equipment that's in the box and therefore heat retention if we wrap it?
I mean, we do have cooling system in ours. Think of ours like a giant computer. So that's basically what's happening inside is that's the the controls for the signal. So if you think of your big desktop computer, so it's doing its things inside um versus with your experience with transformers, there's a little bit more heat generated in that. I can tell you in our ours as well, we actually in the winter time have to create some heat inside that box to keep the computer program running.
Okay. All right. So you're we're less sensitive than Alliant is to a pad mount transformer. Okay. Cool.
Um. Gage has something, and then Steve, do you have anything?
Okay.
Yeah, I would just kind of a a agree. The only location I kind of question is that the Eighth Ave and Tenth Street. And I'm really glad I support the art council taking the the lead on this and and figuring out. I really hope we can, especially for this first go around, get it entirely funded through a grant process. But with uh you said three to five year lifespan on these wraps?
Four to five.
Four to five.
Yep. It said anything beyond the five years, and then you start getting is starts getting very difficult to to take off, and then the adhesive sticks, and then you have a whole in-depth cleaning process to get it off. But if you do it within that window, he said it it just comes off and there's really no issues.
So I guess has have have you guys thought about what happens then after that four to five year time span where we have to take those initial wraps off? Or will that be something for the art council to kind of figure out? Like, if we're going to continue this long term sustainable funding? Um, is that part of their kind of mission to figure that out too, other than this initial funding?
Correct.
Okay.
Steve?
I would say in in general, I I'm in support of these wraps. Uh when the 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 concept first came up, uh I wasn't sure what it referred to, but when I drive by the ones on First Avenue and I look at the ones in Cottage Grove, uh to me, it it's a it's a positive thing, and you look at them and it kind of puts a smile on your face and say that looks a heck of a lot better than a green box. So I think doing them in a limited manner is good, doing them in a high traffic area is good. So my comment is not about specifically where to put them. I just want them in a high traffic area so somebody else can figure out where the best spot is to put them. Uh but I would certainly want to find uh a longer term funding mechanism or a group that wants to do it, or maybe there's a a business that wants to uh fund one of them and and take ownership of that box if it's near near a particular business and it it kind of helps make their business look a little better. So anyway, other groups can figure that out, but again, gazuntai. But in general, I I I like the concept and I think it's positive.
All right.
Phil?
Yeah, when I was first reading the memo, my first thought was that would be great to start in the plaza. And I agree with what Nick's saying, the the ones to the east of that. Um, I would prefer to see versus the other two outside of the plaza. Eighth Avenue, I wouldn't wouldn't, that one didn't even dawn on me that there would be one to to do. And then I would think too, the one on Sixth might be, maybe that gets done in the future. And just because that potentially we'll have a bunch of construction going on there shortly. Um, and then it could get wrapped based off of, well, I guess that could be fun, too. It could be a construction wrap. Anyway, um. So I would be in favor of doing all of them in the plaza.
Okay.
Not just the specific ones.
Yeah, that's a good point that Will makes is that, you know, maybe the pro whatever the the business ends up ends up being in the new building uh potentially could could sponsor that one.
Uh, yeah, or.
Because that's a great idea about business sponsorship. But I think in general, we're grateful that you're you you're uh going through this process and you've brought this forward. I think it's a great idea. We've, I drive by the one on First Avenue every day, and I look at that and I think, oh, we should do something in Marion. And of course, it, you know, my my brain fills up with other thoughts and and then I don't remember to to ask anybody about it, but um but it's so we're we're happy that you have brought it forward. Thank you for for the work you've put into it. And I think, you know, it's been clear, I think that the priority would be in the plaza and then then the others. Um. I, yeah, I don't mind that we do the others, but I would want to see the ones in the plaza first. But you have something, Brian?
Yes, thanks, my your your honor. Uh, I was going to recite what what I heard uh from council. So you just did that perfectly. Um, what I'd like to suggest is we'll take this input, go back, start working with the public art council
Yeah.
on fine tuning what the process would look like and kind of fine tuning the locations internal to the plaza. And then we come back to council so council's aware of and can give the final blessing before we continue on.
Okay. Does that does that sound good, Brett?
That is perfect.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Oh, you're.
I'm up again. I'm up again. Yep. Can't get rid of me. All right. Um, so our next discussion is on uh city uh city maintained uh cul-de-sacs. So um just wanted to um bring this forward. Uh, there was a concern or a question by a resident, and this was asked by uh by the council for staff. asked by, uh, by the council for staff to look into, into this issue. So uh, I'm here to report on that and again, ask for direction on, on next steps. So, so Marion currently has 23 cul-de-sacs with grass islands in the center. And of those, of those 23, three of those are covered by neighborhood, neighborhood covenants. And then 20 have no formal maintenance agreements at all. For more than two decades, the neighbors in the surrounding areas have been voluntarily maintained these and, uh, with mowing and, and trimming. And some of the challenges that we've seen have been, A, of course, there's no formal agreements in place. And then with volunteer upkeep, uh, there's really been no point of contact. So upkeep has been, uh, inconsistent. And, uh, a long-term solution needs to be formalized for a maintenance plan going forward. So, staff is recommending that the city takes over maintenance for these 20 islands that have grass in the middle. They could be added to the spring of 2026 maintenance contract that is already in place. Uh, talked to the, the contractor, contractor has given the, the city a price of, of what that would be. And so that, that could happen, uh, as early as next season. Uh, two, there are two landscaped islands, uh, that are not maintained by, by covenants. And those would be taken over by the parks department, uh, with a pre, pre-emergent herbicide treatment and to keep the, the weeds at bay. We also are recommending that there is an option for uh, the people at the end of those cul-de-sacs, if they wanted to maintain those i- in a different manner, uh, either through natural landscaping or through a higher level of, of maintenance that they could enter into a memorandum, memorandum of understanding with the city. And they could take on that responsibility on their own. So touched on this a little bit earlier, but a timeline, uh, if, if we move forward with this recommendation, that the city would issue letters to the residents informing them of, of this change, uh, provide the MOU agreement uh, for them for an option. And then in the spring of 26, we could add this to our, our maintenance program with our city contractor. Uh, and then incorporate locations, um, into that contract. So the total budget impact for this would be $12,600 annually. And the cost again would be added to the, the basin mowing contract. So in the future, uh, any reconstruction of these streets, uh, those grass islands would be eliminated and replaced with a hardscape surface. And this would reduce the long-term, uh, maintenance costs and then improve efficiency, efficiency, uh, inconsistency throughout the city. And I will take any direction or questions.
Okay. Questions, comments? Well, Steve, did you have something?
Just a quick question, Brad. I'm assuming the majority of the, or in fact, probably all of these are not part of HOAs. That they're just all part of a public street.
Correct.
Cul-de-sac on a public street. So therefore that puts us in this situation of, well, they've been maintaining it somewhat adequately in order to make it looking like the city wants it to look, then we need to take it over.
For the most part, but one of the, one, and one of the challenges that, um, that could have occurred in my, um, in my time, I haven't ran into this, but what could happen is if we did run into an issue where it wasn't being maintained at all and it did encroach and, and violated the weed ordinance, we would not have any individual to, to go back on to, to remedy that situation or abate that situation too, because ultimately there is no ownership, for, for those that don't, that aren't covered by a covenant.
And are they actually dedicated to the public? Are they dedicated in the plating process? Do we know?
They're part of the right of way.
They're part of the right of way. Yeah. So they're public property.
Correct. Yeah.
Yeah.
They, they are public property, but they were privately maintained.
Okay.
Previously.
So your comment about for any future reconstruction of these streets, uh, so I, I'm thinking of a cul-de-sac behind my house and that's when actually has a lot of landscaping in the middle of it. So I don't know where that falls. I think it may be one of those two that has all the landscaping with a lot of bushes and everything in it. But as far as reconstruction of the streets, what kind of reconstruction would have to take place? That we would eliminate the grass island with, when you say hardscape, you just talking about pouring concrete? And the entire thing, is that the option?
That would be, yes, either concrete, asphalt, whatever. Yep.
I mean, that, that is not going to look nearly as good and the neighbors are not going to like that. So what kind of reconstruction of that street has to occur for that even to be considered?
I'm going to refer to my colleague.
Yeah. But ideally, um, when the concrete gets to a point where it's deteriorating, you know, we do our HMA overlay. So the island would stay how it is. What I foresee is when we're doing a complete reconstruction. So when it's completely, the curbs are gone, the street's completely deteriorated, we would rebuild that entire cul-de-sac and we would just make it flat. And there would be no center island at all.
Okay, there you go. Okay. I understand that better than, I had this picture of a raised concrete bed and I go, that's going to look like something you don't want. So, okay, I understand that better. Thank you. Okay, Grant and then Gage.
So, um, going forward as new developments materialize, I take it we're not approving raised center islands in any cul-de-sac that might be proposed?
Yes. The last two that I recall is, I believe it's Stone Creek Court. That's just south of Boyson, um, west Albernet Road. And then there's another one nearby that too. We highly discourage them, especially trying to get an apparatus or something in that cul-de-sac. So we will highly encourage not to have them.
We, okay. All right. So it's a self-limiting problem here, I guess it sounds like. Okay, thanks.
Yeah, when I, when I think about just the potential maintenance and time, I just, and then we talk about replacing it with essentially the concrete in the future, uh, when there's street reconstruction. Is there any consideration or maybe this is more expensive long-term, but I would think it'd be more of a short-term investment? And then it kind of handles itself as if we like just did pollinator plants on those and then you don't have to mow. Especially since we've talked about with the prairie ordinance that we kind of allow for folks now to, to plant and, and their yard or we, would it not make sense to do that for the central? I'm, I don't, asking on a technical level.
Yep. So I, I will say, uh, it typically is about a five to seven year process before a pollinator area pays for itself because of the, the expense of the seed and the conversion process. And there are, especially that first three years, it's a very heavily intensive uh, mowing area just to keep those weeds in check and make sure that they don't take over. So there would be still the mowing that would need to take place at least for those first three, uh, three years. Uh, would be a, a good average, could be longer.
Alright, cool.
Um, but like we stated, we do, um, offer that option of a, an MOU if the residents did want to take something like that over and do the pollinator.
Yep. Cool. Makes sense. Yeah, that was the info I was looking for. So thanks.
Will?
Going off of the fact that our tree board was in here this evening, um, talking about trees, it seems like a great location in city right of way to plant some trees in those cul-de-sacs. And I'm not, I, I understand the, maybe there's some issues with apparatus and maybe there's not, I, I don't know for sure, but taking out the grass and putting concrete, this seems counterproductive to what we're kind of going towards with, uh, over the years of trying to have more pollinators and have more trees and have more grass and it, putting in concrete just seems backwards to me. But I'm for, I'm all for the proposal for us to take over mowing and everything. It's just, it'd be great places for trees. Put shade in the middle of, of a cul-de-sac.
Okay. Um, so maybe I missed this. Did, like, is, i- is there not an opportunity to have, like we do adopt a highway or adopt a whatever? Is there not an opportunity for the neighborhood to adopt the thing and, and take responsibility for it?
There is. And that, and that's where we would implement that MOU. So they, they would have the opportunity.
That's one option we're going to, we would try.
Correct. Yes. And that, and that will go out with, that would go out with a letter if this is the direction we want to go.
Okay.
Yep.
Yeah. I, I, I don't think that's out of the realm of possibility that the neighborhoods would adopt it and take, take more active responsibility for it. Any, any other? Okay. So anyone, oh, Ryan?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, just based on the feedback from council, just any uh, future reconstruction, Mike, I, how many of these do we anticipate in the next five, five years for reconstruction? Okay. Uh, what we can do is we'll just make a note for the file that if there are any sort of reconstruction, um, plans that start coming down the pike, that we would make sure that we come to council with a proposal so we can get more, more feedback. I mean, this is long, long-term down the road. So, um, but the, the main direction was, um, I think Councilman Harper was involved with kind of helping identify this as an issue with us. Um, so we wanted to come forward to council, provide some recommendation, let you know the issue, how we're, how we recommend handling it and then, move forward.
Okay. All right. Are we good?
We're good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Now we have the agenda review for Thursday. There are three items marked. The first one is A8 on page four. That's Leanne.
Thank you, your honor. I marked this item simply to drive clarity for the council and for the public. Um, we are not looking to do a new general obligation bond, but are starting the process to reallocate general obligation bond series 2019B. That was originally for airport improvement projects. And instead we are looking at utilizing those dollars for aquatic center planning that has already occurred, but we can still, um, use these dollars. And important just for the public to note, there are limitations on what type of a project we can use these dollars for because they are an urban renewal general obligation bond and they are tax exempt. In order to retain that state tax exemption, it must be a tax exempt urban renewal project.
Okay. Makes sense. Any questions on that? Okay, thanks, Leanne. Next item is Nicole E3 on page five.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. So tonight we are looking at revised elevations for HOF flats up here on 10th Street and Eighth Avenue. Um, not much is being changed with the site layout. So we're just really focusing on those facade elevations. The original facade elevations were approved last December. Um, the top ones in the next slides are the ones that were approved and the bottom black and white ones are the ones being proposed. Um, one thing to note is that all of the approved materials and colors of materials are not changing. They will stay the same as what was approved. We're really looking at the location of some of the materials, relocation of some windows. So I will try to explain this as best as I can as we move through. So this one is the south elevation. This would be facing along Eighth Avenue there. Um, so really the differences here, again, this top one being what's been approved. So over on that far east side, we've got some gray paneling. And then on the corner, we've got brick. Um, their new proposal switches those two locations. Um, we felt that it really balanced out kind of the look of the building by having that gray, two rows of that brick, your gray paneling and then so forth. So it adds a nice balance look to the building. Again, the brick tones are staying the same, um, same with that gray paneling as well. So, and then within these brick areas, so they're highlighted, um, and that's to show that within kind of that window section of them, there's some light tan brick that's being included. They are pulling that light tan coloration up into the middle of those window elements. So it's keeping with brick in those areas, just adding that secondary brick color that they've already have as, um, approved with the December facade. On the east elevation, so this is the one that would face Hills Bank. With this one, we're looking at adding again at some of that secondary coloration of the brick where those windows are, um, in that light tan color. So it would be this light tan color. Just kind of going where those windows are located. Um, they're also going to be wrapping that gray element from the Eighth Avenue section around the corner. This just helps anchor that corner a bit more than having it, um, in that brick facade. Then they are also increasing the number of windows on this side. That is due to the relocation of the elevator. So really what they're doing here with that east and west elevation is they're kind of flip flopping. And that is due to the relocation of that elevator. So the floor plans, um, kind of swapped. So that's where we gain those six additional windows on this east elevation size. And then some of them are being kind of relocated just based off of that revised floor plan. The north elevation has probably the most changes. This is the elevation that faces their interior surface parking lot. So in here again, we're just adding that light tan, um, kind of coloration where those windows are in that brick area. They're also taking and moving the gray paneling further out to the, um, kind of outer areas of the building. And then the two center areas where they've got that gray paneling, they'd be carrying forward the wood paneling that they are having in the patio areas on the south elevation, but using it more as a prominent facade element here. We felt that this, um, can have helped, you can balance it, helps make it look a little lighter, adding some of that different variation in colors um, to the side of the facade. Um, they're also adding an additional six kind of sliders or balcony patio type, style windows. Um, that'd be in these locations here where the yellow boxes are. Um, and that would be more of a Juliette style balcony. So not a full patio. Um, but those residents would have that ability to open up that larger slider. On the bottom, they are adding one overhead door to this area. So I said, really nothing's changing with that site layout. The dumpsters are moving from the outside to inside. It doesn't change the number of parking stalls or anything with the layout of the site. They are moving those dumpsters within the interior kind of enclosed parking area. So they are adding that overhead door to accommodate that pickup. And then the pedestrian access door on the other corner is being eliminated um, on this elevation and moving to the west elevation. And that's that single door here. And that's to allow for access into the water meter space. And then, so this west elevation, um, was that previous east elevation. So because of the elevator, again, relocating to this western side of the building, they did have to remove some of those windows that were previously approved on this side of the structure. With that, they're also looking at the layouts of those bedrooms. Um, so some of those window locations had to be relocated or eliminated again. This is what was approved previously for that east elevation that faced Hills Bank. The Planning and Zoning Commission reviewed this at their last meeting and it was recommended for approval eight to zero. Questions of staff?
Questions? I have none either. So, thank you. That building's come a long ways since the first renderings. Okay, uh, last item that's marked for discussion is Leanne A6.
So A6, um, this is actually something we do on an annual basis. I highlighted this item only because I wanted to point out that this is the first year we've been able to implement because we just finished a cost allocation plan, the partnership we had with Cost Advisory Services last winter. So we did incorporate data from that cost allocation plan. And I just wanted to point that out and celebrate that with City Council.
Congratulations. Should we clap? Well, thank you. Thanks for sharing that. Okay. Any item that isn't marked for discussion that anyone has questions on? All right, that brings us to the closed session.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the closed session regarding litigation as permitted under section 21.51C of the Code of Iowa. And this is two separate matters.
Second. Removed by Councilmember Jensen, seconded by Councilmember Harper, uh, to adjourn the closed session. Uh, to adjourn the closed session regarding litigation, as permitted on the Court of Iowa, we have the legal counsel's statement, please.
Thank you, Your Honor, for a point of clarification, uh, this will only be on one matter this evening. But I have reviewed the proposed subject matter for the closed session and find the same to be appropriate under Iowa Code, section twenty-one point five one C.
Thank you, any discussion before we vote? Roll call, please.
Mr. Jensen?
Yes.
Mr. Harper?
Yes.
Mr. Miskman?
Yes.
Mayor Abou Osley?
Yes.
Mr. Brandt?
Yes.
That brings us to the end of the work session and we'll see everyone on Thursday, thank you.